Okay, this meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. And at this time, we do have one person online, Councilwoman McAllen. I'd like to have a motion for approval of the agenda for caucus.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion by Ms. Tavernick and a second by Mr. Bartholomew. Without objection, the agenda is approved. Do we have, we head on here, council member discussion? Is there anything for council member discussion at this time?
No.
No, okay.
There's no one.
All right, we are ready to go into executive session. I will read the things that we are going to discuss. 6A is persuading to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2 receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation. That is the Cheryl A. Monday and Margaret Devine versus Beaufort County Detention Center. B is persuading to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2 receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation. Chloe, am I saying that correctly? Chloe Gottsch and Patricia Gottsch versus South Carolina DOT in Beaufort County. 6C is persuading to South Carolina Code Sections 34-70A2 and 30-4-70A1 to receive legal advice on matters covered by attorney-client privilege and discuss issues related to the employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body, Bluffton Township Fire District. 6D persuading to South Carolina Code Sections 30-4-70A1 discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body, Assistant County Administrator Positions. And 6E, which is persuading to South Carolina Section 30-4-70A2 receipt of legal advice where the advice relates to pending claims or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, Beaufort County versus Broad Creek Development LLC. If we do not finish all of these by six o'clock, we will adjourn and come back. For those at home or watching, we will start our regular meeting on time at six o'clock. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
On motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I think I heard Mr. Bartholomew first.
Does Mr. McGowan have a question?
Oh, do you have a question? No, okay. Without objection, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.
...
the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tom Rentsh and his invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be together this evening. We are grateful for the opportunity to work in unity and purpose, and we ask that you guide our hearts and minds in all that we do. Help us to treat one another with kindness, respect, and love reflecting your will in our actions. May everything we do here tonight glorify your holy Son, Jesus Christ, who taught us above all we must love one another. As we seek to follow his example, may our hearts be filled with his love and our actions with his grace. We pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. I'll confirm that with Ms. Brock.
Yes, Hannah, I will.
Okay. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Ms. Tavernick. Is there a second?
A second, no.
A second by Ms. Brown. Without objection, the agenda is approved. The minutes were distributed from the November 18th, 2024 Special Call Meeting, and the January 2nd, 2024, 25th of the office. Are there any changes or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Larson, Councilman Larson. They have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. It's second by Vice Chair Tavernick. Okay. And at this time, we will do the Administrator's Report. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Madam Chair Council. Tonight, we have a few employees to recognize, and then we are also going to have an introduction of our new employee, our Records Management. So our first employee is from Nexus Care of Beaufort County, Ms. Arita Wright Hamilton, if she's here. Great, thanks for being here. So her position title is Treatment Director. Beaufort County linked to service, 32 years. That's impressive.
How many?
Thirty-two. Summary of her job duties, she supervises the day-to-day operations of treatment, managing nine clinicians, coordinating care with surrounding agencies, and ensuring the patient's needs are being met. Something unique, she has two beautiful children and a wonderful grandson named Kai. So, thank you so much. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Last time I did this was at 15 years old. Yes, thank you.
Get a picture, please.
Okay, next, from the Disabilities and Special Needs Department, Ms. Cynthia Perry.
Fine.
Good to see you. So, she's been with the county for 26 years. Cynthia provides early intervention to child ages zero to six that are experiencing a developmental delay or have an established risk condition. Cynthia works directly with family and its children to partner and coordinate services. She ensures that the family will have access to a full array of services, including medical, social, educational, or other services through assessment, care planning, referral, and linkage. Early intervention is a family-focused in-home service, and Cynthia helps these families understand their child's development and gives specific training to assist the family in addressing these areas of delay. Her families are always very appreciative of the services. She's a change maker, and we're thankful that she continues to serve our families. Something unique, I wouldn't guess this. She's controlling and at the center of most of her family's activities with the strongest opinion. Some believe she is obsessive-compulsive disorder, OCD. Maybe a little bit, right? But we'd like to thank you for your service. Do you want to make any comments?
I just want to say thank you and our joy working for disability and special needs.
Thank you. And then we're going to introduce our new Records Management Director, Mr. Kenneth Donald Clyburn. He's here. Here you are. Welcome.
Glad to be in person. Thank you.
So obviously, it's a big job here. He started with the county actually back in December of 2024. As Record Management Director, he's responsible preparing, scanning, microfilming, and inspecting permanent records for county departments, as well as storage for all permanent and active county records for the duration of their established retention period, as approved by County Council and South Carolina Department of Archives and History. Previously, we got him from the Beaufort Memorial Hospital. So, Russell, I'm sure, you know, we'll have some words, but we're the beneficiary of this. But he previously worked as Health Information Service Director at the hospital from 2004 to December 2024. In 1984, he graduated with an Associate's Degree from the University of South Carolina and received a Bachelor of Science degree in 1986 from the Medical University of South Carolina. Kenneth holds a healthcare privacy and security certification and is a registered health information administrator. He has received numerous awards, including the SCHIMA Distinguished Service Award and the Professional Achievement Award. He has also served on the AHIMA Privacy and Security Committee from 2020 to 2024. I don't know those acronyms, but maybe.
Health Information Management, South Carolina Health Information Management and the American Health.
Okay. That's great. That's impressive. He's a Christian, loves serving his community, also an avid jogger with a goal to run a marathon in all 50 states. Well, we share that then.
Oh, wow.
Thirty down.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven down.
I'm going to have to catch up.
You got any comments?
I'm glad to be here. I'm always glad to help the community. I'm always glad to help people. So, being in this position has given me the opportunity to do that and a lot more. So, if there's anything I can do to help you, you, or you, please let me know.
Well, I'm so glad you're here. So, how many states has he run in, and how many states?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, and Mr. Moore?
I've got forty down.
You got to catch up with them.
Lastly, I would like to update Council and the public on the Joint Town of Hilton Head Island and Beaufort County Council Meeting Workshop. We had recommended previously to hold a county joint workshop to discuss the Highway 278 project. This will be at the Buckwalter Recreation Center, Bluffton, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on this Wednesday, February 12th. And our agenda will be posted shortly, but we're going to review the proposals we received from DOT once again. We'll discuss the funding, discuss the next steps to include a potential joint town and county council resolution, and we'll have comments from all of our elected officials and from the public. So with that, that concludes my report. Subject to any questions?
Any questions? Very important meeting, Wednesday.
Yes.
We'll hopefully get a lot of work done at that workshop.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we have quite a large group that's going to come forward for the proclamation recognizing March as Lafayette Month. If y'all would come forward, I'm going to come down there to read it.
Just a few people.
Whereas in 1824 and 1825, the Marquis de Lafayette undertook a momentous tour of the United States. Returning to the country he helped establish and whose Democrat principle he viewed as a beacon of hope for the world. And whereas in March 1825, the Marquis de Lafayette traversed the great state of South Carolina, beginning his journey in Terre Haute on March 6th, and proceeding through Camden, Columbia, Charleston, Etistow, and concluding his state visit in Beaufort on March 18th before continuing to Georgia. And whereas 20 March 25, precisely two centuries since the Marquis distinguished visit, numerous educational and commemorative programs are numerous educational and commemorative programs are being organized throughout South Carolina to honor his remarkable historical milestone. And whereas on March 18th, 1825, the Marquis de Lafayette arrived in Beaufort and was welcomed with a 13-gun salute, a grand procession, and a ball in his honor. Whereas the historic Beaufort Foundation and the city of Beaufort are collaborating with two dozen businesses, organizations, and individuals to make March 2025 a very special month. Partners include the American Friends of Lafayette, the Beaufort Convention and Visitors Bureau Beaufort County, Beaufort County 250th Committee, Beaufort County Library, Beufort County School District, and Home Charter and Private Schools, Beufort History Museum, the Coastal Heritage Society Savannah, the Davenport House Savannah, Liberty Live, Marine Corps Air Station, Beufort Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Paul Hamilton Chapter Sons of the American Revolution, Sea Island Carries Tours, Society of Cincinnati, the Lafayette Trail, the Honorable Shannon Erickson, Honorable Chip Campson, the Thomas Hayward Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Revolution Ballroom, the Rett House Inn, Best Western Sea Island Inn, Spring Hill Suites, USCB, and the Williams Group Public Relations. And whereas, coinciding with the South Carolina Day on March 18th, the date of Lafayette's historic visit to Beufort and is provided in Section 53-30-60, educational institutions across the state are encouraged to engage in programs that celebrate the significant historical commemoration. And whereas the Marquis de Lafayette demonstrated unwavering commitment in supporting the United States during its struggle for independence, embodying the highest ideals of international friendship and Democrat principles. Now, therefore, it being resolved that Beufort County Council does hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as the Lafayette Month in celebration of the bicentennial of the Marquis de Lafayette's 1825 visit to Beufort. In Beufort County, South Carolina, we urge citizens to join in recognizing his Lafayette's historic visit and legacy. Signed, dated the 10th day of February, Alice Howard, Chair.
Lisa, would you like to say something?
Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, we have to shake hands.
Oh, we have to shake first. Okay. Thank you. It looks so official. I'll catch on. Give me a second. Good evening, everybody. Lisa Sunderloh, the Historic Beufort Foundation. We are so excited to be collaborating not only with the group that, that unfortunately, we made Chairman Howard read, but with others in the community. And of course, with the city of Beufort has been our primary partner throughout all of this. We encourage you, on the month of March, specifically March 18th, we're going to be recreating a celebration commemorating Lafayette's visit that day, starting at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And yes, we will have a 13-gun salute, and we will have a cannon salute, and we will have the procession. And we are very excited to have renowned Lafayette impersonator Mark Schneider coming from Colonial Williamsburg. And he is phenomenal. He does not break character. So if anything, come and see the excitement, be involved with it all. And the Beufort County school system is going to be busing 200 5th graders down to Bay Street to be a part of this and to be a part of the procession. Lafayette will be coming in by boat to the waterfront where he'll first be welcomed. And we'll have presentations given at the John Mark Vadeer House. And some of y'all may have heard over the years that the John Mark Vadeer House on Bay Street was called the Lafayette House. More than 130 years it's been called the Lafayette House. And if Lafayette did not speak off of the balcony, he will now speak off of the balcony at the Lafayette House. We can absolutely claim that, which will be phenomenal. But we also have living history demonstrations that are happening that day. And because it is South Carolina Day in the state of South Carolina, all home schools, parochial schools, as well as private schools and the Beufort County School District, all are urged to teach South Carolina history that day. So we encourage those of you who can, please become a part of this. We realize it is a Tuesday, but we had to be true to the date when it actually happened, which was March 18th. So we hope you'll come out. Please check out the website, which is LafayetteBicentennial-Beaufort.org.
The group behind you?
Oh, yes. We have a phenomenal group of folks with us today. Mayor, would you like to say a few words?
Put me on the spot. No, just real excited about this day. It's been a great collaboration of all these different groups together. And we do encourage the public to please come out and support us on this. So with that.
We have with us today Captain Decrue from the Marine Corps Recruit Depot. And the Marine Corps Recruit Depot has been extremely helpful with this. They're going to be having a color guard. The band is going to have a vocalist doing Hail Columbia. It's going to be a really exciting event as a part of it. We are honored to also have with us Diane Brownfield, who's with the Thomas Hayward Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And the Daughters of the American Revolution have already started a program in the schools. And that is to do an essay and poster contest. That's in conjunction with the Sons of the American Revolution, the Paul Hamilton Local Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. And then John Neely, who is with us today and has been very supportive. And he represents the Society of the Cincinnati, who were very instrumental as a part of the efforts with the American Revolution, also the welcome of Lafayette back in 1825. So we have got Grace Cordial with the Beufort County Library. And Grace, her team came up with the most wonderful program. So think about this, guys. Lafayette was supposed to get here at 10:00 in the morning. This was 200 years ago, right? He hit a sandbar. He did not get here for 12 hours because he had to wait for the tide, right? That's Beufort. So when he did arrive, it was 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. What did everybody do while they were waiting for him? So they came up with Waiting for Lafayette. And that's the program that they're going to be presenting. And I think it'll be really exciting to see what they've come up with. And that will be on the 12th of March at the downtown Beufort Library Branch. And they'll also be doing a part with our demonstrations that day on the 18th. And Stella Scott is with us, and she's representing Elevate Art. And she is looking for artists who are interested in doing Lafayette-inspired art. And we're going to have it on display at the John Mark Vadeer House. And it'll be a great, and also for sale, I understand, too. And I think that will be just a great opportunity for our local artists to get involved with it. And who, oh, Scott. I can't forget Scott Marshall, our city manager, who has been by my side through this whole effort. And I thank him very much for his support and assistance with us. And did I hit Rob and Cynthia? So Cynthia is our Executive Director with the Historic Beufort Foundation. And Cynthia is kind of the driving force behind all of our programs and efforts. I don't know if you want to say word. Okay. And Rob Montgomery, who's our Board Chairman. And they have supported through this whole effort, which has taken a lot of time with pulling it together. But we do hope to see y'all in March. Check out the website again. It's LafayetteBicentennial-Beufort.org, Beufort, South Carolina, excuse me, BeufortSC.org. Okay?
We'll get a picture?
Yes, let's all get a picture. Yes. I'm sorry it takes so long, but thank you so much. Every 200 years. Thanks.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we move forward, on my part, I failed to at least acknowledge Mrs. Wright, Aretha Wright Hamilton. Her family is here with her. And just wanted to acknowledge that her family, her mother, who worked for the county for many years, is here with her as well as her husband. So I just want to acknowledge them.
Wave your hand. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to hear a presentation by Michelle Knight, Public Hearing and Presentation of the 2025 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Ms. Knight is with LowCOG, Low Country Council of Government.
Thank you. Oops. Uh-oh. Okay. And I'll just point you. Okay. Good evening, y'all. I'm glad to be here tonight and get to spend a few minutes with you to talk about the state CDBG program for 2025. Before I start, I would like to make a shameless plug for Low Country Council of Government's new member board orientation, newly affected elected members, board members, and elected officials. That is March 27th at our office. There'll be invitations that go out to all elected members who are less than two years into their positions. And then your clerk will get an invitation as well to share with anyone who'd like to come join us to find out a little bit more about what the COG does, because I'm just one small part of what goes on under our roof. Having said that, jumping right into our 2025 program statement. Let's see here. If we can make this thing move along. Here we go. Oops. And I went too fast. One thing that we have to do besides noting that the hearing was published in accordance with the County Citizens Participation Plan is we have to point out that the county does not discriminate against fair housing, protected classes in the sale and rental of housing and residential real estate transactions on the provision of brokerage services. If someone contacts you or a staff member and says that they believe that they've been discriminated against, if you will have them call us at Low Country Council of Governments at that 473-3990 number, we can take that information and then pass it along to the groups that we need to, once we collect that information from those individuals. The CDBG program has historically served the purpose of trying to meet the needs of local governments and assisting or improving economic opportunities for persons of low to moderate income. In Beufort County, what that means currently is if you are a family of four and your annual income is less than $80,700 a year, you'd be qualifying for this program. That number goes up and down based on the number of people living in your household. The program has been in existence in South Carolina since 1982. This year, we are expecting to receive $19.8 million. The state's expecting to receive that to utilize in the state program for purposes of developing grant projects in our counties and towns. Our program statement for this year, the comment period ended at the end of January. That $19.8 million figure was an estimation based on what we expect to receive. But hopefully, we'll have that confirmed shortly if we can get through other things with the federal government right now. But having said that, we don't expect it to waver too much from that number. The three broad grant program categories that the state utilizes that $19.8 million in are community development, business development, and regional planning. So for community development, the lion's share of the money is allocated here. We have basically fall, or spring and fall, application rounds. Our spring round is basically our community infrastructure round. There's $9 million that we plan to allocate toward that. There's a March application request deadline and an April full application deadline. This is our water sewer drainage road set aside. There's a maximum project amount of $1 million that you can apply for, a minimum amount of $50,000 that you can apply for. The next set aside under community development is local priorities. There's $1 million set aside in this program. There is a mid-August application request deadline and a mid-September full application deadline. This program, you can apply for up to $300,000 to address small economic development projects, to address some public health and safety projects. These could be trail projects. These could be park projects, things of that nature. And then to address what they call resiliency in narrowing the digital divide. This is basically to address things like broadband in pocket areas where it would be an LMI benefit. Community enrichment is another fall round set aside. There's $7.3 million estimated to go toward this, again with an August request and then a September full application deadline. This is our facilities, what we call our facilities, set aside. We can do things like demolition projects, downtown streetscape. We can do regional planning projects for infrastructure such as stormwater drainage, water sewer, those sorts of things. We can work on libraries in this set aside. We can work on other publicly owned facilities that benefit a low to moderate income clientele. So for example, we could work on senior centers or DHEC health clinics or things like that. But we could not work on buildings that have a general government purpose. We can do things like fire trucks or ambulances under this set aside in low to moderate income service areas. We can also do sidewalks. And we can do things like public facility modifications in some of those type buildings that I'm talking about that have a low to moderate income clientele served. The maximum amount of funding in this set aside is $750,000 for a project. And then there's a minimum of a $50,000 application. The final items are the final set aside in community development is what we call our ready-to-go set aside. There's only a half a million dollars here. And the maximum you can apply for is a half a million dollars here. This is a non-competitive program. Basically, you've done all your upfront work, your environmental reviews, your acquisition, those sorts of things. And you're pursuing something that you could apply for under community infrastructure or community enrichment. But you cannot wait for that deadline. So let's just say that you have a serious sewer issue with a neighborhood that occurs this summer. Well, instead of waiting until next March or April of 2026, you could potentially apply under this program non-competitively to address that issue because you need to work on it now. You can't wait for a funding round. All of these projects have to meet a national objective. And basically, the three national objectives are benefiting a majority of low to moderate income people. And we talked about what low to moderate income is in Beufort County. Eliminating a slum or blight in a community or addressing an urgent health threat. Urgent health threats are typically natural disasters. So for instance, the people in North Carolina right now that are suffering through damage from Hurricane Helene, they could probably apply for their state CDBG funds under an urgent health threat qualification. So that's an example of that. Ninety-plus percent of the projects that are funded in South Carolina are funded based on low to moderate income benefit. All projects have a 10% or at least a 10% match requirement. If you match more, you compete better. Then our other grant programs that we're going to talk about briefly is our Business Development Program. There's $1 million of that $19.8 set aside under this program. This is what used to be our Economic Development CDBG program, where we could provide public infrastructure to accompany either local... infrastructure to accompany either locating in the area or an existing company that expands in the area that is providing a significant private investment and creating or retaining jobs. 51% of those jobs that they're creating or retaining have to go to low to moderate income individuals, and they have to be what we call qualifying jobs, which basically means that they have to be done or have to be able to be secured by someone with a high school diploma and a year's experience doing that sort of work. Typically, under this program, these monies you apply, make a request for them, and then 30 days later, you make the application. They don't affect the county's threshold if you have a project like this, but typically these projects kind of come to us through commerce. They're not really grassroots generated in us taking them to commerce. And then finally, the Regional Planning Program. That is a $500,000 set aside in which the state gives each of the 10 planning councils, of which Low Country Council of Governments is one, an annual grant of $50,000 to be able to hold these public hearings, to help communities prepare to participate in the program, to be able to meet with staff when they have projects that they're looking to develop before we know that we actually have a real project. Also, to do things like hold our project development meetings that we have annually. This year, we're looking to do that at the COG, probably mid-May. We haven't really settled on a date. It's probably going to be, but the middle of May, though, on that. And then the final balance of the money goes to the state for their technical assistance and administration. Still this year, you get competitive points if your project's located in an opportunity zone. Performance thresholds are pretty much the same this year. You can have two open grants that are less than 30 months old and apply for a third grant, and that excludes any regional planning grants, if y'all were the lead applicant for that for us, or any economic development or business development grants.
How many do we have?
Right now, I think y'all have two. They're at the 30 months, but we've had some acquisition issues, but I think they're finally moving, so hopefully you'll be in good shape to do something this year. And depending on the circumstance and what the project is, we could petition for a waiver and see if it can go in. So I wouldn't let the 30-month-old grant keep y'all from trying to do something if you've got something that you really need, and we can make an argument for it. Also with that, you can have no more than one neighborhood project or streetscape project. None of Beaufort County's projects are neighborhood or streetscape. I think they're both sidewalk projects or trail projects. You can have no more than one ready-to-go project. None of your projects are ready to go. And then you can have no more than one project in the same general target area or neighborhood open at the same time unless you have an exist, the existing project is under construction. So, for example, just to use, say, Dale or Lobico as an example, let's just say we had a water project in Dale, and we wanted to apply for another water project in Dale to take that work further down. As long as the first project's under construction, we could apply for the second one, and it's less than 30 months old. Also, while I'm out tonight, just to briefly mention the Beaufort County Low Country Regional Home Consortium. As y'all know, Beaufort County's the lead entity for that. All 21 of our municipalities and all four counties participate in the consortium, and we basically have three primary objectives. That's to rehabilitate substandard housing, to increase accessibility to adequate and affordable housing, and to support the development of and availability of safe, decent, and affordable housing. And we do that through primarily single fam, owner-occupied, single-family rehab and new construction currently, usually new homeownership construction under our regular money. Our comment period, oops, was that the last one? I think it was. Our comment period, or I say a comment period, our action plan, planning period is in April of this year. So, separate from prioritizing your needs for CDBG, if you have anything that you want to mention to us that you think we need to consider addressing in our action plan, utilizing our program money for this coming year, we'd ask that you get those comments to us before April 30th of this year. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, open it up for questions? Anyone have any questions? No?
Okay. Typically, y'all come back, I think, at your next meeting after committee to go and rank a priority. I know that there have been some discussions with Beaufort Jasper for some infrastructure projects, so you might want to keep that in mind while you're looking at your rankings.
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. And you don't expect any delay in the dollars with the new administration?
We haven't heard anything where CDBG is concerned, but with it being an existing program that's been in effect for, you know, 40-plus years.
Right.
I don't see that changing. I don't see EDA changing or skip money. We know that that's already in state. So the only directives we've been given is with our existing projects, you know, to make our draws as we have invoices come in, but we haven't heard that anything's going to change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. We have a total of 30 minutes, limited to three minutes per person. We call people out in the order that they signed up. I understand that a large number of the people here tonight are to speak from what they signed up about Sunset and Miller Drive, and that is fine, but we are only going to get through 10 people. So if you want to...
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes.
I believe they've limited some of their comments.
Okay.
In order to allow more people to speak tonight.
Okay, well, that's good. There was a public meeting held on January 30th that was well-attended, from what I understand, and there will be, people can also make public comments on the website until Valentine's Day, the 14th. The project will be updated again at the Public Facilities Committee meeting on the 17th of February, correct, Chair? So just wanted everyone here to hear that and anyone that might be watching on TV. So we'll start. Ms. Carrie Majors is the first person to sign up, and I would remind everyone, public comment, every member of the public is recognized to speak and shall limit their comments to three minutes and observe the following protocol. Address the chairman in speaking. Avoid disrespect to counsel and any personalities. Confine yourself to questions under the jurisdiction of the council and be mindful and respectful of those who are present or who may be watching on TV. Okay, Ms. Majors.
Good evening, the council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Congratulations to all of you. And as I witnessed yesterday, as I watched the Super Bowl and the win, it paid off to persevere and to believe that a win was possible by the Eagles, who were the underdogs. And so it gives me confidence and hope as I continue to advocate for the Youth and Communities Center on St. Helena Island, that we will build a larger, larger than the one that you proposed in Phase 1, and that it will adequately meet the needs of our youth and communities. And as our council, all of you, as you look at and decide where to spend our dollars, we ask that you think about the lives of our youth and how this will impact their lives positively by this center and how it will impact Beaufort County and St. Helena as well. So we thank you for listening, and we look forward to what's going to happen on St. Helena Island.
Thank you. Next on the list is Dan Rydel. Am I saying the last name correctly? Rydel or?
It's Riedel.
Riedel. I have a friend that says Rydel, so.
Chairperson.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Howard.
Yes.
Esteemed members, thank you for the opportunity. I live at 55 Sunset Boulevard on Ladies Island. I am here to express our concern over the proposed project. We believe that our street is one of the most charming streets in Beaufort. It is known as a canopy street, and as a part of the plan, many of the trees will be destroyed, therefore removing the charm of this wonderful street that we've all lived on. I've been a resident here 25 years. We are opposed to this idea and will ask your indulgence in listening to all of the proposed and cons of this and make a decision not to proceed with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Sean Darby.
Madam Chair, council members, I live at 9 Miller Drive, and as someone with a handicap, it's hard enough to make it across Miller Drive to get the mail or pull out of the driveway looking for traffic. It's a neighborhood, and that's what my family moved into for a reason, just like it's called Highway 21 and Highway 802 for a reason. At the same time, it's called Sunset Boulevard and Miller Drive, not highway. They are not highways, and highways should not go through neighborhoods. I think as an alternate, you could improve the intersection at 21 and 802. If you added turn lanes on all sides, don't try to fix the congestion problems by diverting the highway traffic into a neighborhood. Adding turn lanes on every side of the 802-21 intersection will alleviate the need to reroute highway traffic from 21 down Sunset and Miller, which, once again, are neighborhoods, not highways. The residents don't want this project, as I'm sure you're going to hear over and over and over. Please scrap it for all of us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Flori. You'll have to pronounce your last name for me, I'm sorry. Florio? Florio, okay.
Chairman, Beaufort County Council. My name is Thomas Florio Jr. I reside at 2 Miller Drive West, which is at the intersection of Sunset Boulevard, right there. I want to address and bring enlightenment to the council. One, I moved in in 1985. Since 1985 to now, present, there has never been an accident at that intersection. Two, I invited the head man, excuse me, I forget his name, senior moment on that, but I invited the head DOT from Beaufort, and there were approximately five property owners at the corner of that intersection one day. Again, I addressed to him about the no accidents at this intersection. He replied, "There is no reason to spend this money to build a circle at this intersection." Cost. Cost efficiency. What is cost efficiency? Three stop signs. Three stop signs. That will do the same thing as this so-called circle will do. The third most important thing is the time-consuming of going around a circle. I spoke with Sheriff Tanner and a few others. It takes approximately three to eight seconds for an emergency vehicle to communicate and drive around a circle. That's a lot of seconds, just like three seconds on your clock. A person could pass away or die. Leave it alone with three stop signs, which an emergency vehicle can make its turn left, right, with no time, with no loss of time. I spring up to council again. The cost. No taxpayers' money for a circle. Three stop signs. $250 worth will do the same job. I thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Robert Detreville.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. Thank you so much for having us today. I'm Robert Detreville, and I live at 86 Sunset Boulevard, and it's a quiet residential street. And for the life of me, I don't understand why we want to spend so much money to shunt commercial traffic through our purely residential neighborhood. It just seems like there's the same amount of cars on the sea island. Where are you going to make them go through a private neighborhood or a residential neighborhood? Let's not do that. Let's spend, well, less than $10,000 to put in three or five always stop signs, maybe a few speed bumps, slow the traffic down, calm it further than it is, and let's see if we can keep the commercial traffic out of the residential neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Karen Detreville.
Good evening, Chairman, and thank you all for having us. I object to diverting highway traffic down our street, down Sunset, and making the circle and going to Miller. It just seems like it's going to add more traffic, not calm traffic, and create more accidents and more backups. And as the previous gentlemen have said, there's a lot easier ways to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Kupia.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, council. I'm here ditto what everybody's saying. We met several years ago, and we expressed our thoughts that this whole project shouldn't have even gone any farther forward. We were, we got to witness a nice presentation the other night, which was quite an expensive project, that they spent a lot of money. They put all these diagrams in all for us to look at. And again, as has been said, stop signs would certainly stop the traffic, slow down the traffic. Mr. Florio said that, you know, he had no traffic accidents at his intersection. I've had two fatalities in front of my driveway. I'm at 125 Sunset Boulevard, and I've witnessed four or five other accidents, all due to speed. So stop signs will divert traffic from coming down our street. It is a residential street. It's not a rural road. And so, again, as I think you'll hear it over and over, why not just keep it simple? Stop signs will slow traffic, stop traffic, and prevent accidents and fatalities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jan Malonowski? Oh, did I say it, Jan, the right way? I should know how to, I should know how to say this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jan Malonowski, and I've been a resident of Sunset Boulevard for 25 years. I want to echo Mr. Florio's comments and my immediate neighbor, Kevin Kupia. We have suffered two fatalities. He's at 125 Sunset, I'm at 123 Sunset. One of the two fatalities, I found the body in my front driveway. The driver had been ejected from the car going at a high rate of speed. What Kevin also, or excuse me, what Kevin failed to also add to the two fatalities, we had one near fatality when a drunk driver came down Sunset Boulevard at a high rate of speed, impacted one of the live oaks, and the car broke in two, and the responding state highway patrolman a couple weeks later said that driver was lucky to be alive. We need some traffic lights or, excuse me, some stop signs or some speed bumps, but there's no reason, in my opinion, to bring highway traffic through a residential neighborhood. Let's first calm the traffic with some stop signs and all in best efforts of getting some public safety reestablished on... some public safety reestablished on Sunset Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan. Veta Yo?
Veta Yo.
Veta Yo, okay.
Madam Chair, Council, everything that you've heard is, you know, what we all want you to hear and hear in detail. I went to a meeting, I think it was back in 18, at the middle school, filled to capacity when this plan was presented with the penny sales tax. And at that point in time, I don't think we had anyone who supported it. Now, years later, the plan for Sunset-Miller has mushroomed into this great big thing with 115-foot roundabout in front of our homes, trying to push traffic through our residential neighborhood, and we're still against it. Last weekend, my neighbor Susan Hoag and I, we walked most of the entire neighborhood, and we were carrying a petition and talking to our neighbors. And I can tell you, to an individual, there was not one single person that is in support of the current plan for Sunset and Miller Drives. I think the petition now has over 150 signatures on it, and it will be presented to you at some point in time. So we do ask you, like everyone behind me has said before, please, please, keep our neighborhood as it is, a quiet, residential, beautiful neighborhood street, and hear our voices. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Carol Clayton Roof.
Hello, Chairwoman and Council. My name is Carol Roof, and I did a petition for our neighborhood. We have about 160 signatures as of this evening. I'd like to present it to the council. I'll leave it up here for the clerk to give you. Yes, as my neighbors and friends have said, we've been dealing with this matter for many, many years now. Unfortunately, the referendum tacked on our little neighborhood, along with the Hilton Island Bridge back when. And of course, everyone wanted the Hilton Island Bridge to be done, and so they voted in favor of the referendum, which made sense. Didn't make sense why our little neighborhood was tacked in to that referendum. So no one, from the very beginning in our area of the woods, has been in favor of this project. We've met with people for year after year after year, talking about the different options that we have, and we've tried to work well with you all, but it seems that you won't go away. So we are here to ask you to stop this project. We don't need this project. You don't have enough money for this project. It's a win-win. You can take the money that you need for other projects, use it for those, and leave our street the way it is. We appreciate everything you do. We want to work with you. If stop signs will work, if speed bumps will work, we want to work with you. I think we've made that clear over the past, say, nine years. But we do not want this project, this 115-foot roundabout, to go in. So thank you for hearing us. Here are our petitions with comments. We also have a plethora of responses to the county petition or comments. We've sent that around as well. So please take a look at those. Please take them into consideration, and we appreciate your consideration in this regard.
Could you give that to Ms. Brock?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Harley Roof, not Rough, it's Roof, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you all again very much, Madam Chairwoman, and all of you for being here tonight and hearing out our neighborhood. I know a lot of people and a lot of organizations come to this podium seeking money or seeking additional money for things, and you have to make big decisions. We're the opposite. We're coming wanting to push this money back to you. We understand there are 18-plus projects on tap as part of this penny sales tax referendum that passed, and we're asking you to please strip all of the money from Sunset-Miller and use it on one of the other 17 and not on ours. We think that the program, we would rather have the status quo with no money being spent than the considerable amount of money that is proposed on our small, little residential area. We think the status quo is better and safer. I want to also remark that it is dangerous to divert this traffic down our road. There are at least two or three school bus stops where I see young kids out every day, and school buses coming to pick them up. And I would be concerned if I had little children in the neighborhood, letting them be there, as with the increase of traffic and with the roundabout is going to bring about. And the roundabout, for those of y'all who don't know it, would involve stripping out the one-stop sign that we have. We want more stop signs, not for the one that we do have right now, to be stripped away, which is what this plan calls for. I grew up in Columbia, South Carolina, on a road much like Sunset, a residential road. And I remember my senior year in high school, they finally, after much comment, put speed bumps in on my road. My parents called it a drag strip before that, but they put speed bumps in on the road, and the speed problem and the safety problems were completely solved by that. We urge the council and the powers that be to please spend less money on our road, perhaps give us stop signs and speed bumps, but please save the money here and apply it elsewhere. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, Kathy Fagan. Y'all are doing well. We're still, we're not even used 20 minutes up yet, so we're good.
Hi, Madam Chair, Council. Thank you. My name is Kathy Fagan. I live also at Sunset Boulevard, and I agree with everyone, all my neighbors here, in that we don't really feel that this project is needed and the money would be best used elsewhere. Thank you.
All right, Susan Hoag.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members. My name is Susan Hoag. I live at 53 Sunset, which is basically the bullseye of this plan, which proposes 115-foot roundabout blocking and interfering with ingress and egress to at least three of the waterfront homes, as well as homes across the street. So echoing the expense of this project, are you willing to pay for a waterfront roundabout that will be very difficult to justify to the taxpayers? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bobby Riddle? Not right there, Riddle?
Thank you to council. I echo what my neighbors have said. I live at 55 Sunset. I am a retired school teacher. There are many children, this is a residential area, full of families and children, who wait by the side of the road for the buses to come. If you divert highway traffic down our streets, it's a dangerous situation. As you know, I don't know whether you've had kids, kids are quick. They're not paying attention. They're talking, they have their earbuds in, they're not going to hear it, they're not going to turn and see it. It is a tragedy waiting to happen. We don't need it. It's a residential area. If you could do speed bumps or stop signs, but don't put the next generation at risk because of something that council or people thought about nine years ago. We don't need it. We do need stop signs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Richie Heap? Is that correct last name?
Heap.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Heap of trouble.
I appreciate everybody here tonight, hearing us out and on Sunset. I've been there for 62 years. My family's been there for a little bit longer than that, but I live at three Sunset Bluff, three-in-one Sunset Bluff at the very end. I'm sorry, I feel a little bit nervous, but over the years, I've witnessed a lot of accidents on Sunset Boulevard because of the high rate of speed on the cars and the circles that they want to put in on the sidewalks. We all agree that it's money that can be spent somewhere else. I don't know what else to say, other than we all agree that the money needs to go somewhere else for another project. We just want a common-sense solution to it, stop signs, speed humps, will slow them all down, I believe, because I've witnessed people getting hurt with pretty bad accidents. I've had cars go through my garage, but I put up lights all the way across my property line, so I haven't had anything since. But I do appreciate it, we appreciate it, and I hope y'all can consider our recommendation.
Thank you. We have one more, Rose Ewing. Did I say your last name correctly?
Close enough.
Okay.
Hello. I have lived in Beaufort for 26 years, and I feel the changes you are making to Ladies Island are overall making it a lot less safe. The proposal for the roundabout to divert traffic onto Sunset Boulevard will result in many accidents and probably loss of life. A few weeks ago, someone was making a right turn in front of me on Sunset, so I slowed down. The person behind me passed us using the oncoming lane of traffic and almost caused a bad accident. It's not a policing problem, because police cannot be there 24/7. I see them patrolling Ladies Island all the time. Another issue, if approved, will be the Starbucks at Ferry Drive. That will also cause a deadly accident, because that small area will surely cause traffic to back up from the drive-through lane and back onto Sea Island Parkway. If you can guarantee me that the traffic will not back up onto Sea Island Parkway and only right turns will be allowed, I won't oppose it, but I doubt you can make me that promise. I have also seen nothing done to make the Camellia Banks neighborhood safer, as traffic is turning out onto Sam's Point Road against three lanes of traffic going at least 40 miles per hour. And finally, developers are developing the survey land behind the Royal Pines Golf Course, the undeveloped golf course, and that's only zoned for golf courses. So I'm assuming that somebody's trying to sell it to have the zoning changed, and that will cause even more traffic on Ladies Island. So I'm a supporter of personal property rights, and I understand change happens, but I cannot sit by and allow all these changes to happen in my community to make it less safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, the website is open till the 14th to make comments on, and then Public Facilities Committee meeting will be on the 17th of February, and the project update will be presented at that meeting, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
18th.
Oh, 18th, I'm sorry. 18th of February.
Chairman, or Chairwoman, did everybody get to speak?
Yes.
That's pretty good.
That's great, and they were very, we appreciate everyone. The time that they took was well-spent, that we took to listen. Okay, let's go forward. Next on our agenda is, are there any liaison and committee reports that any council member would like to make at this time? Yes, sir.
Sorry, it's not really a report necessarily, but I had the opportunity to tour the Department of Special Needs and Veteran Affairs. Beautiful building, didn't even know it existed. Went into 100 Clearwater Way, I believe.
Yes.
Absolutely wonderful facility, and I appreciate everybody giving me the tour out there.
Oh, great, that's good. Any?
Joe, you have anything? Okay, I do.
Okay.
School district report. They had a work session where they discussed their facilities master plan, reviewed the Riverview Charter School annual report, they got a construction update from the referendum, and they discussed a budget update and highlighted their priorities. Also, the May River High School girls' golf team was recognized as state champions.
Yes, I know.
And they updated the procedures for reviewing questioned and challenged school library materials. Remember, that was from last year? And then last Wednesday, I attended the County Transportation Committee workshop at Buckwalter Rec Center. There were staff members there, the committee members were there, SC DOT people and a couple of vendors. They reviewed the 2025 project estimates for year eight for resurfacing, year eight rejuvenator, Bluffton Parkway, which I asked because my car still wishes it was better, and other topics. And they noted, "We have 78 miles of roads, and only one mile is rated as very poor." They had several vendors that were there, and anybody that wants to know anything about maintaining roads, there's a website called roadresource.org. It's very interesting, but you could get lost there. And then for the public, we have a field trip to the Solicitor's Office this Friday from 10:00 to 12:00 in Oakery. And he's not giving us Valentines, but he's going to talk about what he does and the cases and so on, and the public's welcome. It's a workshop, just a discussion, no agenda.
Okay, any others? Yes, Mark?
Yes, I'll be finance committee. There is one item on the consent agenda, and that's for the Pedler's license, which again, we just renewed it from last year, exact same rates and everything. And to add, I think I also saw where the neighbor wrestling team won the state championship this past weekend.
This weekend?
To add to the golf championship. And our next finance meeting is next Tuesday. Monday's a holiday, so next Tuesday is the next finance.
Finance meeting, okay. Any other committee reports?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things on the agenda from the Natural Resource Committee. We have item number 12 that's on there, dealing with Mitchellville, the appraisal, and that's going to be shared with us in doing regular council meeting in a few minutes, as well as, I don't know what number this is, but we're going to be recommending development rights purchase on some land on Seaside Road, about nine acres, and that's on the agenda. And then there's some property called Davis Road that's on the agenda as well to be recommended for the purchase of Free Simple. At the February meeting of the Natural Resource, there were two items that was delayed, postponed until the March 3 meeting, and they were being recommending zoning from T2 rule to, one was being neighborhood mixed use, and the other one was being neighborhood center. And they've been asked to be postponed, and that was granted to them for that postponement. Just want to, for council members, I did attend the solid waste and recycling board meeting. I can't remember what the date on it, but there are three vacant positions, and I would just ask council to look at that so they can make a recommendation for that board.
Are they by locality, local, by district, or are they by?
By district.
By district, right?
They're by district and not by council.
Solid waste and recycling.
They're their own districts.
Recycling.
They have their own solid waste district.
Region aid is, I think, is David Matholomew in mind, and we need to get together and see whether we can come up with a name for that. And I think there's probably one in your district too, I think.
Okay, Burton and Port Royal.
There are three positions that's vacant, and I would just ask staff to reach out to council members to fill those positions. That's it, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just briefly want to mention for the public, I attended the TCL board meeting, and they have almost 900 students that are in dual enrollment now with high, so students who can work on their college degree while they're in high school, which is fantastic, yeah. And May River has the most enrolled students. They're all, all the high schools have the program, including Hampton County, but May River's the highest. Do you have a report from Greenspace or anything, Larry, to report? Oh, it sounds off, sorry.
You're on mute.
Well, I think the, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I think the Chair of Natural Resources covered the items that will be discussed, and one of the items tonight, of course, is the appraisal. Is Mr. McShane in the audience tonight?
No.
No, I'm sorry, he's not.
I guess someone from Glanning would be talking about that, and that's the only report that's on the agenda. The other two have been postponed to a later meeting. One is the conservation effort for about 1,000 acres, and the other is a payment to the county Hilton Head for $1,008,000 that they expended for some property over on Beach City Road, but those will be considered at a later meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval. Next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. I hope everyone had a chance to review those few items we have. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. All right. Councilman Lawson, and second by Councilman Bartholomew. Without objection, the consent agenda is approved. All right. Next, we have the discussion of the results of the appraisal dated February 4, 2025 of the Mitchellville property as authorized by County Council on December 9, 2024 related to the purchase of the Mitchellville property by the town of Hilton Head. And I think Mr. Atkinson's going to speak to that.
Good evening.
It was included in our packet, too.
We'll need a motion on that.
So.
Oh, we need to make a motion. I have a motion by Councilman Rents. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Bartholomew to discuss this.
Okay. Well, good evening. A couple of months ago, staff was directed to go out and get a second appraisal. There's sort of a long history there with why that second appraisal was asked for. The original appraisal was done July 20 of 2024 through Charleston Appraisal Company, and the 26.46 acres appraised at $9,887,000. Hilton Head requested, because their purchasing bid was considerably higher than that, asked that another appraisal be done for a number of reasons that has already been stated publicly. We went through Valbridge, and the new appraisal dated December 16, 2024 puts the effective value conclusion at $10,880,000, with the difference being $993,000. So what's before you today is a discussion and decision as to whether council wants to apply more green space funding to the project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions with that.
Any question? Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion to approve.
Oh, okay. You want to make?
From my attorney. Brian had asked me to read this. I have, I move that the council accept the appraisal report dated February 4, 2025, conducted by Valbridge Property Advisors on the 26.46 acre property located on Mitchellville Road, and that we authorize the administrator to pay the town of Hilton Head Island the value of the property as listed in this appraisal from the Greenspace Sales Tax Fund pursuant to the application submitted by the town and recommended for approval of a grant by the Greenspace Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, questions?
I have a comment. So I'll reiterate my comment that I was not in favor of the third appraisal. I think we set a precedent, which I didn't want to open that door. That being said, it was done, and we were committed to accept the appraisal amount. So that's where we are at this point, to pay the difference of $993,000 to the town of Hilton Head.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Glover?
No, that's, is that the motion?
She made the motion.
She made the motion. We had a second.
Okay, okay. Basically, that's the delta between the two.
$993,000.
Any other questions, comments? Larry, anything? Any comments, Larry?
Hold on. Well, this was to discuss rather extensively at the Greenspace Committee, and this appraisal was done because the first appraisal came below, the second appraisal came a little bit higher, and this one seemed to moderate that. So the town of Hilton had paid a little more than the amount of this appraisal, actually quite a bit more. So they're not being compensated in their entirety for the purchase, but this, I think, goes a long way toward a fair and equitable resolution of the request for reconsideration of the amount that was considered at the first appraisal and reconsidering the third. So I think this appraisal is fair. I think that the town deserves to be reimbursed for that money. I think everyone is in agreement on the Greenspace Committee that we should go forward in this matter, and I certainly, of course, do.
Okay. Anyone have any more questions for Mr. Atkinson? No. All right, let's do this one by show of hands. All in favor of the motion as stated by Ms. Brown, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have ordinances for third, second, and first reading, and Ms. Tabernick, Vice Chair, will go through those.
Okay, we're at ordinances for third reading and public hearing. 2025/06 is an ordinance placing land purchased by Project Micro into an existing multi-county industrial park. The vote at the first reading was 10-0. Second reading was January 27, 9-0, and I'll take a motion for that.
Some move, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. A second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew? And we went through it the last time, so I'm just going to ask if there are any public comments on this motion. I don't see any. Anyone from council have a comment or a question? I mean, we've been through this four times.
I do have a comment, and I would ask Mr. O'Toole, if he can address this, and he's probably not going to be able to address it, but I'm going to just throw it on the table. I'm concerned in this area that we're trying to develop for fire safety. And I do know that this site doesn't have fire protection as relates to having fire hydrants, et cetera, et cetera. Are you planning to address that at some future point? Is that something that's on your tech, on you? Because you're promoting economic development in an area that not really, that do not have good fire safety at this time. It's still a rural area, and fire hydrants are not there yet. So just want to throw that out there.
That's not a layup. That's a pretty tough question, Councilman, but I'll try to answer it.
You're probably not the right person to address that, but for you, I think that should be a concern that you live for that area, trying to see how about fire safety, the best that can be done.
Well, I'll answer it this way, though, that, you know, you just heard from folks in Beaufort County that oftentimes they don't want things to change that are a certain way, right? And so we've done 75 projects largely through redevelopment. So in this particular location, there was a business. That business went out. Another business came in, invested $3 million in that space. And now, I would say, a very well-informed purchaser has stepped forward for a lot of reasons. They want to be in this area. It's a defense contractor. Their investment's going to be $7 million. And so their insurance company is going to remind them of what it takes to make that building safe. And to make it safe is the burden that they're assuming by taking on this property. So as we look to different development opportunities in Lubbock, in Yamasee, in the Whale Branch area, some of our developments are going to have to probably include safety infrastructure that might solve for this. But it's, Burton's not too far south of there, and I'm sure there are mutual aid agreements that could augment what they're able to bring as well.
Yeah. I just, when I was reading through it, that just came to my mind, and I just said, I'm going to raise the question.
Yeah, it's a good question. I'm sure when they pay their insurance rates, which they've already met with their broker, they're informed about what that cost is. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And what the risk is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else question or comment?
I'm going to have questions on number, on letter B from Mr. O'Toole.
Okay, well, let me wrap up A. So if we could take a vote, all in favor of the motion, show by raising your hand. Mr. McGowan, okay, passes. 13B is 2025/07, an ordinance for Beaufort County to enter into a special source revenue credit agreement with Project Micro. This is a public hearing. At the first reading, January 13, the vote was 10-0. Second reading, January 27, the vote was 9-0. Can I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Glover. Anyone here public comment on this one? Okay, then let's go to County Council Discussion. Ms. Brown?
Mr. O'Toole, could you come up again to the podium again? I have some questions. On page 144 is the minimum investment. You have come before County Council and are with this council in the committee meetings, have talked about several times Project Micro investing 7.1 million in creating 42 jobs?
7.1 million, yes.
Right, okay. And creating 42 jobs in the next five years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right. According to the ordinance, it is expected to provide economic benefits to the county. Benefits are being extended to the company in the form of a tax break equalling 6% tax rate over 20 years. Creating well-paying jobs in our communities is excellent and something we should be doing a lot more of. But I have a few items for public transparency and to be clear to other companies looking to invest in our county. Look on page 144, Section 3A. It clearly says the minimum requirement is 2.5 million. So they're not, so I guess, explain how this works, because you said 7.1 million, but this says 2.5 million is minimum. So how does that work?
And anytime you have questions, you can call me around the clock, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And you're liaison to our board, so.
Yeah, for next time, yeah.
And then we've had Will Johnson here as well. So we intend to be very transparent. Under South Carolina law, the floor is 2.5. So while the company projects to invest 7.1, the floor is 2.5. If they don't meet the floor, as you read on in that agreement, they would owe us for the tax rate at the 10%, plus interest. So it's just stating the floor that they need to exceed, or else they're ineligible for the SSRC.
Who measures all this? Who keeps track of the dollars invested?
We do. We do. As a matter of fact, interestingly enough, last week, across two projects on one, for, and it's very amicable, so I'm hesitant to use this word, but for non-performance, we took back $35,000 from one company and from another company, 11,100. But we do, Brian Warner on our team does annual BR&amp;E meetings, business retention and expansion meetings, and we usually can see the investments. If you had the opportunity to walk through stoneworks, you can see that they have made the investment in the facility. So that's easy enough to quantify. And if they're getting state grants, we're also getting their reporting back when they apply for reimbursement for the state in particular on investments. And then we also, by touring the facility, and if need to, if need be, will look at payroll records to verify the employment levels.
All right. And is the information provided back to the county and the public? Is it just provided back to you guys, and you took care of that?
It's through a forum like this that the public would have an opportunity to know. And we are very conservative in Beaufort County. We only do 20-year agreements. In other counties, they do 30-year agreements. And through prior councils and through this council, we've had our attorney in here to walk through the process, and we haven't made any departures from standard operating procedures since we put this in place.
Okay, so you've already answered number three as well, so I finish my question.
I appreciate your question.
No, I appreciate it too, because I didn't realize you went far beyond my questions, so I appreciate that.
I have that problem. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bartholomew?
Kind of building off your question, doesn't the Department of Revenue also keep track of some of these?
Yes, they absolutely do, yes. This is coordinated through the county offices and the Department of Revenue. As you read, I think on page 144 there, in the document you have before you, you can see the requirement to fill out the appropriate form with the Department of Revenue. And we send out reminders on that. We're always improving our process. But we'll send reminders out to all companies in March because they're really required to do that at the end of their fiscal year.
That's the PT 300, right?
What?
The PT 300.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And again, I have to say Hank Admanson, Rob Merchant, and Hillary Austin have been very helpful on this. Some companies that we've issued SSRCs for have missed the deadline, and we're always improving our process to make sure that they're well aware that they have to file the form you mentioned.
Thank you. Any other question for Mr. O'Toole? You got grilled tonight, huh? You got grilled tonight. That was good. You did a good job.
It keeps me sharp. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second, we have discussion, all in favor of this motion for Project Micro. Please raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Now we're on second reading. These are ordinances for second reading, and due to the compliance with 15-day requirement, the public hearing for these next three will be February 24 instead of today. So 2025-08 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2024-36, conveying property to Beaufort Memorial Hospital for the development of affordable housing and medical offices in Bluffton, South Carolina, located at 333 and 335 Buckwalter Parkway. The first reading was January 27, and the vote was 10 to 0. And as I noted, third reading and public comment will be February 24. So can I have a motion for this, please?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Bartholomew. Second?
I'll second.
Who was second? Yes.
The public hearing will take place in the first March meeting, so we can meet the 15-day advertisement.
So this is not correct within the agenda?
That's correct. Public hearing for those three are going to take place at the first meeting in March.
Okay.
So we can meet the 15 days.
All right, we'll correct the agenda then.
It was currently the time to publish, but we have, we're not having to go back.
Okey-dokey, thank you. All right, do we have a second? I'm sorry, who's second? Oh, Mr. Lawson. Okay, Hank and Allison. Allison Cabbage is here. Would you two like to come up and give us a brief little information for the public on this?
I'll tee it up, and then I'll hand it off to the expert.
Okay.
But as we discussed before, this is an exciting project. We've had discussions last week and this week with the town and the actual project developer to take the next steps in the development, but we had to go back and make our language a little bit more specific in the ordinance to convey the property. And Allison can speak a little bit more to that.
I don't know that there's a whole lot to say, other than we appreciate your consideration and support so that we can move this project forward.
Right, so it's no problem for us to have a delay for the third reading and public hearing into March because we have, they are authorized to sign and move through the process for applications, development agreement amendments, et cetera, and they keep moving that ball forward. What we did do is, we specifically mentioned square footage, and we talked about a 30-year maintenance of the affordable housing, and it also had a protection for council that if, for some reason unforeseen, that didn't maintain that time limit for that purpose, we would recoup the, at that time, present value of the land, less improvements, and therefore you get your investments protected.
I'd just like to make a comment. This is in Logan's district, and he's not here, but he's been supportive of this project.
And you're saying we don't need a public hearing?
Oh, no, no. We need a public hearing, but being pushed back a meeting is not a big deal time-wise because they're able to continue through the process. Town Council at Bluffton had a meeting last month where they had an executive discussion about, and then they came out and voted to support the project and help us through the process.
Okay, great. Any other comment or question on this one? All right, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, the motion passes. Thank you. We are on 2025/09, an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the development rights purchase of real property identified as tax map serial number... Could these be any longer? R300-028-000, 128B-000, 128C, 128D, also known as Seaside Road PDR. The first reading was January 27, and the vote was 10-0. And as we noted, public hearing will be in March. So can I have a motion for this, please?
Some move, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew? There's no one to give a recap. Oh, Amanda, do you want to give a recap on this one, please? Oh, Amanda, do you want to give a recap on this one, please? I mean, there's lots of documents in here, as I noted last time, kept me out.
Yes, Kate Schaefer with the open land address, that's okay. Another blonde conservationist. There are no, there's no new information from first reading, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions. This would protect a piece of property with a conservation easement on Seaside Road, or on Davis Road, I don't know which one you started with.
A short synopsis for any public that might be listening and didn't watch first reading.
Sure. So this is on Seaside Road on St. Helena, and it would protect a piece of property that's currently a pecan grove with a conservation easement. Farming and agricultural lands are priorities for the Rural and Critical Program as directed in the referendum, and this is a willing landowner seeking to protect his property forever with a conservation easement, and the Rural and Critical Board unanimously supported this, as did your Natural Resources Committee and first reading. So we thank you for the support and look forward to closing this project.
Any other question or comment? Okay, you stayed all this time for this. Okay, let's have a vote, all in favor of this motion, please signify. Thank you very much. You might as well stay up, yeah, okay. Twenty twenty-five slash ten, an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the fee simple purchase of real property identified as tax map serial number R six hundred zero twenty-nine zero zero zero, zero zero fifty-four zero 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 zero, and also known as Davis Road, and the vote of first reading on January twenty-seventh was ten zero. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawson. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Glover. Okay, want to tell us about this one? This one's near me.
Yes, it is. So this is forty point seven acres at the headwaters of the Oketee River. It's actually a property that connects to currently owned Fee Simple passive parks that were purchased with Rural and Critical funds and would create greater connectivity between the Fee Simple-owned lands for the citizens of Beaufort County, creating urban forests in the middle of a developing area around the sensitive headwaters of the Oketee. This is a property Beaufort County and specifically the Rural and Critical Program has sought for quite some time. It's been under previous negotiations with the county, and we're hopeful to make it all the way to the closing desk this time and add this to the future passive park inventory.
That'd be great.
Happy to answer any questions.
Did you want to add to that?
I have one thing to add.
Okay.
Sarah, can you bring the backup? It's page four oh seven.
Four oh seven.
This was discussed, it's about the fact that there were two appraisals and that we're paying ten percent over the second appraisal. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on with that. It was talked about in committee, and then at first reading, it was mentioned, but we went through it really quick. So this was originally back in twenty nineteen, the Rural and Critical Program was pursuing this property because it's right next to other properties that we own. At that time, the appraised value was one point two million dollars, but right before we could close, it was sold to an outside buyer. Then again, in twenty twenty-two, Rural and Critical continued to pursue this, it was for sale, and we got another appraisal, and it came in at seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So typically, we don't go above the appraised value, but because we had two appraisals that were in a reasonable timeframe, and they're so far apart, we're actually paying eight hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars for the property, which is still a good value on the property considering the first appraisal. But I just want to make sure everybody was aware that that's what we're doing so that it doesn't come up after the fact. We brought it forward, we talked about it, it's been talked about at Rural and Critical, we talked about it at the committee. It was discussed briefly, very quickly at first reading, but I want to make sure everybody was very clear on what we're doing with that, so thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, that was in the document, so thank you for re-reading that. Anybody have a question?
Don't have a question, Madam Chairman, but just want to make a comment that attending the council chat in Bluffton.
Yes.
There were some citizens there talking about pathways. This is going to make an excellent, in the future, I don't know how soon, this is going to make an excellent pathway for a lot of people in Beaufort County, particularly those in Bluffton. Just wanted to make that comment.
The pathways that most of the people in the area, like Sun City and Bluffton, they want pathways on one seventy all the way to Beaufort. That's the pathway they're looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not, this is not, I saw, the man's face was not written.
But it's going to be a beautiful pathway.
It'll be a beautiful place to go and enjoy, but that's not what they're looking for. But thank you for the comment, it'll be nice. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor of this motion, please? Mr. McAllen's like, okay. All right, these are first reading. First reading, twenty twenty-five slash eleven, an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance of S dash eight fifty-nine located at South Carolina four sixty-two and South Carolina one seventy, which is to be abandoned by SCDOT. Can I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
I'll second.
And David, second. Jared, you want to tell us about this one? I love that SCDOT is abandoning something, that's great. Does it mean it has no net worth?
It has worth to someone.
Okay, is it us?
Well, us and Ace. So this is the remnant of the old SC one seventy when they made the improvements around the two thousand timeframe, and so this is, we purchased last year, last fall, the triangle portion just south of the blue line there. And so this is the remaining asphalt serving currently as the driveway to Ace. So this would allow us to own, have the ownership of the triangle and the roadway, so then there's no one in between us and Ace for future.
So it has value to us?
Has value to us and to Ace.
Thank you. All right, anybody have a question for Jared? Yes?
I have one. Are they going to do like a quick claim deed, or how does that work?
It is, it is.
How is a quick claim deed?
So we have a piece of paperwork that we fill out and click claim that to us.
Okay.
And it's free?
Free.
There you go, we take free.
Righteous.
Any other question or comment for Mr. Frelix? All right, all in favor of this motion, please indicate. Thank you. Two twenty, twenty-five dash twelve, an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the transfer of right of way back to property owners, R one ten zero zero eight zero 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 six five three, four zeros, or tract thirteen, and parcel R one ten zero zero eight zero zero zero, zero six five four, four zeros, or tract twelve. Oh my gosh, parcel one, R one hundred zero zero eight zero zero zero, zero six five six, four zeros, or tract ten, and parcel R one ten zero zero eight zero zero zero, zero six five eight, four zeros, or tract eight, as shown on exhibit A, pages one to four, associated with Rybough Road sidewalk project in Port Royal. That's like one big mouthful. Okay, can I have a motion for this one?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Bartholomew, thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Glover. Is Brian here? No. Okay, Jared will take it, thank you.
Yeah, so to make sense of all those digits, this is actually kind of simple. So this is in one of our pathways from twenty eighteen, we had a section of sidewalk on Rebo Road near Lenora Park, and we had to purchase, we had to move the fence line as part of the project, and then we reset the right-of-way at the back of the fence and coordinate with DOT. At the end of a project, we return the right-of-way back to DOT. They did not want the fence inside their right-of-way, so we are essentially giving back a half of foot of right-of-way back to the landowners that we had previously purchased the reset fence. So this is, this is the last draw that's needed to return the right-of-way back from, we purchased all right-of-way as county. At the conclusion of the property, we do a consolidation plat and we turn that back over to DOT. So that is what we're here to get it back in order for DOT to accept it.
And those are all condos, that's why it's such narrow.
Yes, yeah, there's wooden fence and then condos behind it, so that's why it's individual properties.
Anyone have a question on this one? No comment?
I had to read all those numbers the first time, so I understand.
Next one, I'm just going to say parcel twelve, thirteen, fourteen, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? No? All right, vote, those in favor of this motion, raise your hand. All right, we're good to go. That ends the ordinances, thank you.
Okay, we're on number sixteen, resolution. This is a resolution, we need approval for the all joy boat landing improvements.
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Okay.
Now we're in discussion. Any discussion or questions?
No, I think it's great.
Yeah, just to say that we did have a community meeting, which we had a great turnout, very well attended, it was very organized, and people had a lot of input. So again, we're moving forward with what discussions came up with during that meeting, and we'll move forward to try to come up with a plan now based upon what we heard and what we talked about in that community meeting.
So now I need a motion to approve the resolution that defines the all joy boat landing improvements.
We had a motion.
Well, we had a motion to discuss it.
Oh, all right, I'll make a motion, he can make it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Did I do that right, Miss Brian?
Resolution.
Okay, we have a second to?
I did.
Councilman Larson? Okay. By show of hands, all in favor to approve? Okay, that's unanimous, all right. Okay, at this time, we are, oh, one more, sorry. The is a resolution to adopt the Low Country Council of Government Safety Action Plan and Target Zero Policy. Can we have a motion to open up discussion of that?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Bartholomew, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Vice Chair Tavernick? All right. Is there anyone going to speak to this, or we just?
No, I think we already did this one a couple times.
All right, so let's have a, let's have a motion to approve, to adopt the Low Country Council of Government's Safety Action Plan and Target Zero Policy. Can you make that motion? Miss, Councilman Brown, do I have a second?
No, I'll second.
All right, all in favor by show of hands? All right, passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we are going to, I need a motion to adjourn again, we did not finish all business for executive session. You want to say, Brian?
It might be wise to make a motion at this time to extend beyond eight o'clock in the caucus meeting.
Okay. All right, listen, okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to extend our meeting beyond eight o'clock. Do I have a motion?
Do we have a choice? Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
A second? All in favor by show of hands to extend beyond eight o'clock? Show of hands? No, we have one? No? Okay. Did you get that? Okay. All right, now.
You're going to reconvene the caucus?
We're going to reconvene the caucus in executive session in the ECR. At this time, there may or may not be something to come out of executive session.
There will be.
There will be, actually, there will be some actions to come out of executive session. All right, we will adjourn, we will reconvene in the ECR. All right, we will adjourn, we will reconvene in the ECR.
All right, we have -- we are back out of executive session and we do have actions coming out of executive session.
I'd like to make a motion that counsel not accept the plaintiff's settlement offer dated February 5, 2025, in the case of Cheryl Monday et al. versus Beaufort County at this time, and that we authorize the deputy county attorney and outside counsel to forward the settlement offer to the SCIRF and request they favorably consider the offer and inform the county within 10 days whether they will accept the offer and pay the full settlement amount pursuant to our insurance policies which were in effect for the relevant time periods.
Do we have a second?
No second, no.
A second by Councilman Bartholomew. By show of hands, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Any other business to come before council at this time? None? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.